So the next item on the agenda is a virtual presentation by Steve Buckley, who is legal counsel for the New Hampshire Municipal Association on the Planning Board role and responsibilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Steve Buckley, this is going to be a virtual presentation. I believe he is on the Zoom. And Steve, I think I just made it so that you should be able to start your video, and you should also be able to share your screen if you would like.
Evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Steve Buckley. I'm your legal services counsel with the New Hampshire Municipal Association. I will now share my screen so that the entire Planning Board can see the presentation that I believe Mary has provided to you a copy of the PowerPoint slides, which is intended to give you an introduction from my perspective of the basic roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board. A little bit about myself, I was in private practice mainly representing municipalities for 30 years, and then joined Municipal Association in 2014. In my hometown in Bow, I was in the Planning Board for 12 years, and also I'm currently a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So I've broken down this presentation really into two parts. One designed to give you a general introduction to the statutory duties of a planning board in New Hampshire, and then to focus more particularly after addressing the statutory duties, the Planning Board's procedures. What are the nuts and bolts of how the Planning Board goes about making principal decisions? Probably the most important ones are those relating to approving subdivisions and site plans. I think it's always important to begin at the beginning with regards to the Planning Board's role in a municipality. And in your city, the Planning Board, as you've already heard this evening, has a principal role in writing your master plan, or in your case, you're updating your master plan. I would just say, I've sat in the position of being the chair of a master plan update committee in my town when we updated our master plan back in 2004. And I know it can be a considerable undertaking, but certainly with the assistance of staff, and when we did our master plan update, we had also the assistance of citizens coming to charrette events to share ideas of how they would wish our town to look like in the future. I think the other thing that was particularly helpful in our master planning process, and I would certainly recommend that it's probably something I'm sure staff has already thought about, is developing a detailed assessment of future land use opportunities. And really, it's designed to give a complete review of what is the remaining land areas within the municipality which are available for development, taking into account the characteristics of each of the different areas based on slopes, soils, and other characteristics, and certainly requirements of the zoning ordinance. Master planning is probably the first and foremost obligation of a Planning Board. Then, of course, as you've discussed tonight, the capital improvements plan certainly is a very important component, which is certainly intended to be part of your master planning process. How are you going to plan for those capital infrastructure improvements? More importantly than anything else, to ensure that the city sets aside dollars in capital reserve funds or some other funding mechanisms so that you can manage the tax rate, but still undertake the necessary capital improvements, which are deemed necessary and appropriate for your community in the future. Zoning and the zoning ordinance amendment process, it's certainly different in a city than for a town. In towns, it's the Planning Board's job to propose zoning amendments, propose the first zoning amendment, zoning ordinance, and propose amendments in the future, and have them placed on a town meeting ballot. In your situation, if I understand your charter correctly, your Planning Board proposes the zoning amendments that are eventually considered by the City Council for adoption after a public hearing. But then related, of course, to the zoning ordinance is the fundamental duty that the Planning Board has, reserved entirely to the Planning Board, to approve subdivisions and adopt subdivision regulations, and to approve site plans. Site plans being non-residential uses of land or multi-dwelling uses, multi-residential uses of land of more than two dwelling units, which are covered by site plan review. Two other forms of regulation, by default, Planning Boards have the authority to regulate excavations. That's the extraction of sand and gravel. I don't know how that is arranged in your city, but in most municipalities, it's the Planning Board, although the legislative body, in your case, the City Council, could delegate excavation regulation either to the Public Works Department or some other body or agency such as the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And then finally, driveway regulations are a really important part of the Planning Board's role in managing your public street and highway network, and managing how driveways are constructed, how they're constructed, where they're constructed, is certainly an important part of how you, in a city or in any municipality, manage your highway network. As I go through this, I'm assuming that if anyone has questions, you'll just unmute your microphone and speak the question, or you can also put the questions in the chat and I'll try to answer those as we go along.
Does anybody have any questions? We're all set for now, thank you.
Okay. So subdivision of site plan approval. A couple of things I always feel it's important to remind Planning Boards about subdivision approval. You can require, which I'll touch on a little bit later in the further slides, you can require that all projects receive preliminary review. So you can say in your regulations, especially if adopted by the City Council, the requirement that every project come before the Planning Board for conceptual consultation. And there's nothing more invaluable than having the opportunity to have a developer present broadly-based, not necessarily detailed plans, so that you can have suggestions available for the applicant before they commit large sums of money to put together detailed plans. So having the opportunity to have a conceptual consultation certainly has always been, in my experience, beneficially allows, you know, a sharing of information of how is this project just going to play out under the city's regulations, and then lessens the cost impact on the project developer so that they can shape the final plans where most of the money is spent putting the plans and documentation engineering together, once they have a better idea of what would be likely acceptable, not binding, but likely acceptable to the Planning Board. So again, under subdivision approval, you're going to approve plaques showing divisions of land, you're going to approve streets, approval of streets and their proposed location in the future is part of what the Planning Board does in the subdivision process. And that approval also would demonstrate and lay out the utilities and other facilities that would service any subdivision or residential subdivision. On the other side of the coin, in terms of the principal powers of the Planning Board is site plan review. So you have to have a zoning ordinance, which certainly you have, in order to have site plan review, and the Planning Board has to have subdivision regulations. But the Board not only has the power to regulate new uses of land, but you can also regulate the development or change or expansion of uses of property. And I think it's important because that element of the authority also allows the Planning Board to establish, and this would be through the legislative body, the City Council, thresholds that would define when a change of use or expansion of use of an existing site plan requires the project to come back to the Planning Board. I've always been of the opinion that, you know, it's prudent for a town to express or municipality that if a developer or a project, let's say a strip mall, has a certain number of elements to it that wants to be modified, so long as you don't add more than a certain number of new square feet of building site or impervious soils or other significant changes, those would be dimensional modifications to the project that would be permissible without having to come back before the Planning Board. But it's important and necessary to define when a certain amount of new square footage of building space or impervious surfaces would require a project to come back to the Planning Board for further approval. The other thing I would just mention, because it is more commonly coming up, is the manner in which site plan review cannot be required for co-location or modification of a personal wireless service facility. So we have in New Hampshire a comprehensive statute, RSA 12-k, which exempts from site plan review anytime a project is planning to co-locate another antenna or other telecommunications device on an existing tower. So that's another way in which, by state mandate, there's a limitation on the ability of a Planning Board to exercise site plan review. Certainly, you've already had an opportunity to discuss what would be looking at for your Planning Board and your community and update your master plan. And as I understood the planner, that the vision, the goals and objectives would be one of the major areas that would be addressed through your master plan update. Insofar as adopting a first zoning ordinance, which certainly you've already done many years ago, these are the two fundamental prerequisites for a zoning ordinance, the vision and land use requirements, that those particular elements of a master plan are particularly required before a city or town can undertake zoning. But there are many, many other areas in which master plans can address individualized subject areas that are deemed important for your community. So for instance, and I've spent many, a happy day visiting in Keene, because my daughter lives in Keene, you know, I know that the city has a very robust recreational point-of-view and trail systems. So, you know, I could certainly understand why in your community, your master plan would have an element on recreational trails or recreational systems. But there are many others that would be appropriate. Certainly, I would imagine, less so for an inland city like Keene, but certainly for many communities, and it could be an issue for the city of Keene, planning for climate change certainly would be an important part of a master plan process, being prepared for how climate change will impact both the community, the people who live in your community, and the infrastructure would be, I would imagine, an important way in which you would plan for those kinds of circumstances which will arise from climate change. The Workforce Housing Statute also is another element of, I would probably fair to say, a form of statewide zoning, which must be taken into account. Certainly, I would imagine it would be part of what would be discussed in your master planning process, but also making sure that your zoning ordinance complies with the Workforce Housing Statute. So as written, it currently requires that workforce housing be allowed in the majority of the land area zoned residential. And one of the fundamental issues that can arise for any community is, does your community have its fair share of workforce housing, which is typically done through an analysis? I think, as you may be aware, the regional planning commissions, in concert with the Office of Planning and Development, are working on a statewide project to do housing needs assessments. The regional planning commissions are required every five years to do a housing needs assessment. And from my perspective, the ideal way that that should be handled is the housing needs assessment should try to give as much as possible to the communities within that regional planning area, what are the targets that each community should have in trying to attain its fair share of workforce housing? And so the Workforce Housing Statute certainly is one way in which that objective can be achieved, and the regional housing needs assessment can be one way to measure whether or not a community is attaining its fair share of workforce housing. And I just have here these two elements of what is considered workforce housing. If it's housing for sale, it has to be affordable to a household with an income of no more than 100% of the median income for a four-person household for your county, the county of Cheshire. Rental housing is affordable if it is available to those of income no more than 60% of the median income for a three-person household in the county of Cheshire. So these are important elements that have been in place since 2009, and bear, you know, careful understanding when you are looking at such things as updating your master plan or amending your zoning ordinance to perhaps achieve greater affordability of housing in your community.
I'm sorry, Steve. Steve, could you hold on a second?
Sure.
Do you have a question, Harold?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, the actual numbers for housing for sale affordable or rental affordable, who's the source of that information?
This definition actually comes from the Workforce Housing Statute, but you can obtain from the New Hampshire Housing, New Hampshire Housing has on its website the data that underlies the actual dollar amounts that would define what's considered affordable. And that table that is available, the affordability table, is modified every year based upon housing prices and other data, which I'm not very good at statistics of this type, but there is a table, as I have suggested, it does exist, is published by the New Hampshire Housing every year, that gives you the numbers that support what's affordable for housing for sale and what's affordable for rental housing.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
You've already touched on your capital improvement plan. You know, I think that having been a party to, you know, the effort to really put in place a really solid capital improvement planning process in my town, luckily I was aided by someone who actually knew numbers better than I did, he was an accountant. And we built what I thought was a really effective capital improvement plan, and it's proving to be, you know, an important way in which we analyze the proposals that are coming forward to the community. Right now, we're in the middle of a bit of a debate in our community about whether or not it's prudent to construct an artificial turf field for athletics at the, actually it's going to be built near the Memorial School, which is our middle school, and next to our elementary school. And whether or not that is in fact a priority versus what had previously been identified as priorities, as repairs that were necessary to our elementary school. So I think the capital improvement program, from my perspective, really does help a community identify what are our priorities are with regards to capital improvements, what comes first, and how we go about allocating the resources, and then making sure though that that expenditure process fits within a fair and reasonable impact on the local tax rate. Because you don't want to have taxes going up rapidly in one year and go down just because of significant capital improvements. So the idea for a capital improvement plan is to spread out over a number of years savings in capital reserve funds so that you'll have the dollars necessary when the project has to be undertaken, or the piece of large capital equipment such as a fire truck has to be purchased. But the other thing which is important to know about a capital improvements plan, it's not a regulatory document. You can't deny a subdivision because the capital improvement plan doesn't speak to the needs that a particular project has. But it is a prerequisite, if you were so inclined, if the zoning ordinance in Keene has an impact fee requirement, you have to have a CIP. Certainly, it would be necessary for growth management. Growth management is probably a bad word, but it was more common during the 1990s, and it is a prerequisite, you have to have a CIP plan. As I noticed from looking at your charter, section 2-1024 makes very clear that the Planning Board recommends the City Council amendments to the zoning ordinance that are eventually proposed and suggested consistent with the Board's recommendation, and the City Council then determines whether those amendments will be adopted. It's the City Council which is your legislative body. But there is a requirement that there be at least one public hearing on any proposed zoning amendment under RSA 675:2, which is zoning amendments by the City Council. Now, I would assume, but it wasn't entirely clear, I didn't have a chance to examine your charter at length, but it did appear as if, I would assume, that the public hearing on zoning amendments is conducted by the Planning Board, but maybe I've got that incorrect, perhaps it's done by the City Council. In any case, obviously, there has to be at least one public hearing before amendments to your zoning ordinance, historic district ordinance, or building code can be adopted. Innovative land use is another important tool which can involve the Planning Board in doing some of the business that perhaps is normally reserved for the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So an innovative land use control, as recommended by the master plan, can give the administration of an ordinance to the Planning Board, could be the Board of Selectment, in this case, I suppose it could be the City Manager, or to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, or other border body according to the ordinance. But if the Planning Board has not designated the regulator, the Planning Board has to be consulted before any amendment is adopted. I think my experience has been the innovative land use control is the most effective way to kind of centralize a land use regulatory process in one board. And I would speak to the particular circumstance. I represented a number of municipalities. This was certainly more of an issue back in the 1990s when cell towers were becoming more commonly being proposed and constructed throughout, certainly southern and many parts of New Hampshire. And one of the things that we noticed pretty quickly is the cell tower structure, its devices and things that had to be built in relation to it, needed site plan review. But it also needed, in most instances, in this community that I represented, we decided the better way to arrange for allowing the cell tower to be built would be to set up a CUP process. So we combined together the thought process of having a site plan review with a CUP so that if someone wanted to build a cell tower, we had overlay zones within the community where designated where you could possibly get a conditional use permit granted by the Planning Board. And then the Planning Board would combine whether it would give zoning relief and allow the cell tower to be built with a conditional use permit, combine that with the site plan review process. So it allowed, I thought, the communities to be more efficient in dealing with land use of that type. And I think that is a good reason why, in certain instances, delegating to the Planning Board the power to regulate zoning through a CUP process is a good process to follow. I think the way I would analogize it, it's essentially like having the Planning Board granting a special exception. And if you're familiar with your zoning ordinance, a special exception is, well, we'll allow you to undertake this use if you meet these requirements, as opposed to if the use isn't allowed in that zone, you got to get a variance, and you got to prove hardship, and all the other requirements for variance. But a city or town could say, well, on the other hand, maybe we will allow that kind of use in this particular area, but you're going to have to meet certain requirements that we think are necessary. And so many communities just have special exceptions. But then if you do it through the CUP process, if you're going to grant a conditional use permit, say for a cell tower, then you can pretty much combine what's going to have to also happen, site plan review with the CUP process. And there are a number of different subject areas that the Innovative Land Use Control Statute talks about. There are many different types of innovative land use controls, cluster development regulations, impact zoning, performance standards, these are all enumerated in the statute. Impact fees typically actually directly come under innovative land use controls, but it is an important way in which the Planning Board can be involved to some degree in some of the zoning decisions that have to be made. Because certainly, your zoning ordinance can address all the variances of variables where people would like to carry out uses of land, and that's where we have to have permissible changes to uses, either through special exceptions, which goes to the ZBA, but in this case, innovative land use controls would go to the Planning Board. The other thing I would say about the beauty of the innovative land use control process is if someone is aggrieved because you don't approve an innovative land use control, or if they are aggrieved because they didn't like the fact that you granted a conditional use permit, the appeal is not to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the appeal's only to the Superior Court. So the review of any decision, just like any review of a decision by the Planning Board, is to the Superior Court, there's no intermediate step where you go to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I mentioned previously the Planning Board has an important role with regards to public streets, and, you know, always important to, you know, make this, drive this point home, because there is a cooperative relationship, I think would be fair to say, between the Planning Board and new subdivision roads or new site plan roads, which their dimensions and how such roads are built would be defined by your subdivision of site plan regulations, and then your Public Works Department. It has its own set of standards and rules with regards to road construction. And I'm assuming, this is often true in many communities, there's, you know, there's a harmony between, here's the city's road construction standards from Public Works, and those should be similar to or the same as those which are required for subdivision of site plan review. But two other elements of the statute discovering how the Planning Board is involved in the approval of public streets, proposed public streets, and their occupancy. The Planning Board has the power to say, when you approve a subdivision, even could be a site plan, that there has to be a minimum amount of completion before certificates of occupancy to allow people to live in the homes on that street can be issued. And that's an important thing to put into your decision-making process, because you want to be able to incentivize the street to get built, and also homes get built, but there's kind of a natural cost push effect. You know, the sooner I can get homes built and occupied, the more I can spend to complete the infrastructure I, as a developer, have agreed to put in for your project. So allowing some degree of occupancy before the roads are completed, somewhat sensible, but also sensible to be sure, the completeness of that road is sufficient to allow appropriate occupancy of homes within a particular subdivision project. And that's why the Planning Board has this power to set a minimum amount of completion for a road that's being built by a project developer before occupancy can be allowed, certificates of occupancy can be issued. And finally, of course, when you approve a subdivision, and you say, yes, we'll approve this 20-lot subdivision with this new road that will eventually become a city road, we're going to ensure that you have bonded for the cost of building that road. So you've got an approval, but that approval is subject to this requirement, that we're going to have security to ensure that the cost of that road is guaranteed through an instrument such as a letter of credit or a performance bond, usually issued by a surety company. So that performance bonding piece is part of certainly the approval process, and it is a connection between the Planning Board and the eventual construction and completion of public streets as part of the planning process. I mentioned driveways previously, I want to mention them here. The Planning Board is authorized under RSA 23613 to approve driveway permits on city roads. But most Planning Boards don't carry out, obviously, the day-to-day process of issuing driveways, driveway permits, or issuing permission to construct driveways. That's done by your Public Works Department. But the Planning Board does have the authority to adopt driveway regulations, and then to delegate permit issuance to the Public Works Department. But this also connects the Planning Board, but also to the regulator, it's probably the Public Works Department, the ability to ensure any driveway that is built complies with the construction requirements, the permit that was issued. The Planning Board, or the town, the city, has continuing authority over any connection to a public street which would be deemed a driveway, even if that driveway never got a driveway permit from the city in the past. And I don't know how many of you have seen this before, I see it quite frequently in my community, an ill-built driveway that has a very steep pitch from the adjacent road down to a public street often creates a very bad, large ice patch right next to that driveway, which can be a hazard to the traveling public. And it's that kind of problem that arises from poorly-designed driveways that really should be fixed or corrected to minimize both the hazard to the traveling public, but also to make sure that that erosion and that drainage does not cause harm to the adjacent public street. You probably already have a process of doing approval of merged lots. It's a statute that's been in effect now for about 15 years, so anyone who's got two or more contiguous pre-existing or approved subdivided parcels can merge them together, no public hearing is necessary. And in fact, you may do this in the city, but the statute makes clear that it doesn't have to come back to the Planning Board for approval, it can be approved by the Planning Board's designee. There's no new survey plan that needs to be recorded, and the notice has to be endorsed by the Planning Board or the designee and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. But one thing that's important to note, there is a requirement that was implemented three years ago, I believe it is now, that if any of the lots which are being merged are subject to a mortgage, it has to be the case that the underlying mortgagie has consented to the recording of the recording of that merger so that the, there's no objection expressed by the mortgage company or the bank or the lending institution. And that consent actually has to be recorded along with the lot merger documents. So this, I guess I would say facilitates making it easier for people in your community to do things such as bring two lots together that they don't no longer wish to have separate lots, but they want to wish to merge them. One other thing I would mention, because I have received this question frequently, you cannot merge lots on both sides of a road because the lots have to be contiguous. I know there's some argument that sometimes the lot owner owns the underlying fee in the roadbed. I think that's a real interesting argument. But if you've got two lots on either side of a public road, those lots are not contiguous, and they cannot be merged under RSA 67439A. Now, I'm not familiar enough with your zoning ordinance to the extent that you have a off-site, you have an impact fee system. But even if you didn't have an impact fee system, or as a supplement to your impact fee system, there's this statute, RSA 67421 Roman 5J, makes very clear that when you approve a project, the planning board has statutory authority to impose offsite exactions. So a project in any particular circumstance where you determine that the project has unique and necessarily to be ameliorated impact, the example I always give is someone's building a Walmart or other large retail outlet, it may be determined that it is essential for the flow of traffic safely in front of that particular retail project that there be an XL or a D cell lane allowing traffic moving into the project to move off the stream of traffic and into the parking area for the retail use. And that's considered to be a highway improvement, which is deemed necessary because it is the only way that you could safely operate and access that particular retail operation. And there's what we call a rational nexus. The needs created by that project are deemed one where this particular improvement is required. But the power the planning board can exercise for offsite exactions is limited to highway, drainage, and sewer and water upgrades. But it is an important way in which you can ensure a large project of any significance pays its fair share for the cost of offsite improvements and the impacts it might create in the city. I've mentioned this, I'll mention it again, preliminary review, conceptual consultation and design review. If you have not already, I think it's a very good idea to have the city council adopt a resolution under RSA 67435I, excuse me, to require preliminary review of all projects coming to your city planning board. Preliminary consultation is non-binding, no butters notification is required, it's general discussion. Issues that arise, that could arise are fleshed out under local regulations, and you'll look at what the project will have to go through in terms of process, site visits, et cetera. I've always felt, in certainly the years when I was in the planning board in my community, that was an invaluable opportunity to have that direct communication with a developer in a less, you know, confrontational manner. I don't know if that's the correct word, but a less demanding requirement for the developer to come up with rather expensive drawings and engineering concepts which are used to then file a completed application. You don't need those things to really flesh out some of these details, and that's why preliminary consultation is, in my opinion, quite valuable. But then there's a more formal process, which is kind of halfway step between a formal application and conceptual consultation, and that's design review. It's still non-binding, and so is conceptual consultation. But there are some additional requirements. There has to be a butters notification, and there may be special studies that have to be provided as part of the design review process. But again, it's another way in which a planning board can conduct a review without having that more rigorous timetable that you have to meet. You know, the basic requirement is planning boards have to approve or disapprove a plan within 65 days of acceptance of a plan as a completed application. You don't have that problem when you're in conceptual consultation or design review. That brings us to formal application and kind of the process. I guess probably useful for me to just stop here and feel that I've kind of covered most of the statutory steps and most of the remaining of the materials is really process issues. I don't know if there are any questions that are, you know, arose due to my going through some of these statutes and some of the ways in which I think these statutes bear on the business of being on a planning board?
Does anyone have any questions? We do not. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so formal application of a planning board, you have to submit a completed application. Your regulations specify what's considered a completed application. It's a checklist of plans, studies and designs, you know, and what is designed to minimize review and revision so you get what you need upfront so you can decide that you have enough information to make an informed decision. You certainly, as part of that formal application process, defining what are the costs and consultant studies and providing detailed accounting of what the expected expenses for the project in terms of internal review, external review by outside consultants hired by the municipality to better inform the planning board some of the issues that would arise, whether it's highway engineering, whether it's drainage, whether it's environmental concerns, wetlands, any number of things which will bear upon, you know, how the planning board eventually make a final decision to approve or disapprove a plan. And the application eventually is voted on at a meeting with a butters notified and publication of notice of that fact that there's going to be plan acceptance. So you, as I previously indicated, have this timeline for decision-making that is binding and it is required to be observed, and it's defined primarily in RSA 674:4. So as I said, preliminary consultation is no time limit. But an application submitted has to be submitted 21 days before the acceptance meeting. So as long as the project applicant has submitted the information necessary to be complete, and I'm sure this is mainly a staff review process, it has to be submitted 21 days. And then 10 days before any public meeting, and that's what it is, when you consider plan acceptance, it's a public meeting, it's not necessarily a public hearing. But most planning boards schedule the initial plan acceptance as also a public hearing. You would notify the public that there's going to be a plan acceptance meeting to consider the application as complete. And if the plan is considered complete, the board presumably, you could, then open the first public hearing that evening and begin receiving content and information from both the applicant of butters and concerned citizens. And then you have to, as the statute says, hold at least one public hearing, make a final decision within 65 days of plan acceptance. And you have to issue that written decision within five business days of the date at which the planning board approved or disapproved a subdivision or a site plan. There are some alternative site plan review and review approval procedures. So your city or town can authorize the planning board to delegate site review for minor site plans to a committee of technically qualified administrators. I don't know if your city council has created a minor site plan review process, but that is an option. So if you have projects or defined that considered a minor site plans, that's a method whereby it can be delegated to technically qualified administrators. Many communities also have a technical review group. Actually, this was mentioned at some detail in a New Hampshire Supreme Court decision, Paul Martin versus Rochester. The Martin case really was dealing with the right to know law and whether or not the public had a right to attend the technical review group. But technical review groups traditionally are just made up of the public works director or his or her designee, the police chief, the fire chief, ambulance, water, sewer, the key departments in your community. Once a month would have a meeting where applicants could come in, present their proposed projects, and get feedback. And so each department head might say, well, this is the problem I see with this, this would work here, that worked and worked there. So you would be providing suggestions and directions on how the project might be shaped to be more likely one that could get the planning board's approval. And I've also mentioned that the city council can establish these thresholds below which a project or tract does not have to get site plan review. So project thresholds, another way in which you can have an alternative method of either changing or modifying how the planning process is handled through the planning board. Acceptance vesting is an important part of the decision-making that the planning board makes. I think, I don't know, I've heard in certain communities, sometimes a project might be lingering in front of the planning board for a long time. And this concept of acceptance vesting can be quite important. If you have a project that's before the planning board for a year or sometimes more, the fact that the project was considered complete has an important impact on what regulations will apply to that project. This statute, 67612, makes very clear, once a project is deemed a completed application, and that sometimes affects design review too, once it's considered a completed application, the rules of the game in place at that time are the rules that that project has to comply with. So once it's completed, it's a completed application, if six months down the road the city decides to amend its subdivision regulations, those new subdivision regulations do not apply to this project which was considered a complete six months ago. And that's designed, probably easy to understand, the rules of the game that were in place when my project was deemed complete, those are the rules that I have to abide as I go forward to get final approval. And that's in part the reason why I call it acceptance vesting. It vests you from changes to the regulatory structure, changes that take place because I've considered my, I've been able to get the planning board to consider my plan a completed application. There is a new statute that does give the planning board new relief for additional time to consider applications or get plans approved. And it was designed to deal with the circumstance of the planning board declaring a project of one having a development of regional impact. So under RSA Chapter 36, one of the duties that towns have is to ensure if a project has one of regional impact, as determined by the planning board and as defined in that statute, that you would then involve the affected community and give them, and along with the zoning, the regional planning commission, give them the opportunity to be heard and have the status of being a butters in the review of that particular subdivision or site plan. And I think there was some concern that there wasn't enough time given for the planning board to actually consider the developments of regional impact process. And as a consequence, this statute was amended effective August 9, 2021, which extends the review and approval deadline for 30 days where the project was deemed to be one of regional impact. And I think that enables, I think, the planning board to have more flexibility in making that decision and not feeling that they're going to be pinched for time if we consider a project of regional impact. Because many times, if you declare a project of regional impact, you really have to stop the process in terms of what you're doing with the planning board, give notice to the regional planning commission and the abutting community, and then give them opportunity to be heard at the next occasion that the planning board has public hearings. And it kind of slows the process down. Having another 30 days certainly enables the planning board, I think, more easily to make a judgment without the pressure of time that a project has one of regional impact. There is another new statute that addresses the rules for third-party inspectors. I think there has been some concern in the legislature that there's a certain amount of expense attendant with third-party contractors that are hired by municipalities to especially review the construction of infrastructure as part of the subdivision and site plan. And as a consequence, this amendment is designed to require better developing of scope of the inspection process, which is prepared by the planning board and allows input by the applicant. On the other hand, it also allows a town or a city to, instead of having construction, supervision of construction by a third-party engineering or planning company, to instead have a certification process where a site plan could be certified as being completed in conformance with the planning board's approval as an alternative to hiring a third-party inspector. The other part of this law, SB 86, also has a new requirement, certainly something to keep in mind in your master planning process. It prohibits the municipality from adopting any regulation that prohibits a person from installing a safe and commercially available heating or energy system of that person's choice. I'm not sure exactly what that particular requirement is driving at, but that is a requirement that is certainly one to be aware of as you consider either changes to your master plan or changes to your zoning ordinance. A few things about the public hearing process. It's very clear in RSA 6764 that there is a certain population of people who are required to be heard from. So you have to hear by statute the applicant. That makes sense. You have to hear a butters. You also have to hear others with a direct interest. And someone with a direct interest is someone who can say, this project is reasonably likely to affect me. But then the statute goes on to say that you can hear others as permitted by the planning board. So you do have the power to say that others who are either not directly affected, they're not a butters, they're not applicants, that you are not necessarily required to hear them at public hearings. You should, and I'm sure you do, have rules of procedure for governing the operation of your public hearings and the public input process. Certainly impartially following those rules is a paramount importance. It also is, from my perspective, very beneficial to have site visits, and keeping in mind that if you do have site visit, those are public meetings, and the public has a right to attend. And the tricky part with site visits is if what if the applicant does not consent to the public attending the site visit because they are entitled to attend, but as part of the public hearing process? That becomes tricky. I haven't had that happen too often. Most of the time, the applicants are more than willing to allow the public to join the planning board at any site visits, if that's the process you have in your community. The other thing I would just mention quickly, I don't know if you've seen them before, there's a gentleman named Riggins. He was on the planning commission in the city of Phoenix for many years, and he wrote this set of what he considered his nuggets of knowledge on how best to be a good member of a planning commission. And they're called Riggins Rules. They're available at the Office of Planning and Development Materials. And I think they're an excellent tool to understand how to really be a good planning board member and to participate effectively in the planning process with members of the public participating. When you're deliberating and weighing the evidence, I think there's a few things that bear just attention to the process. Certainly, I think it's very important to make sure that you get all the necessary information before closing the public hearing, because you don't want to have a situation where you have to reopen public hearing on more than one occasion to receive new and additional information. One thing that I felt was always useful in the communities I represented is to be sure that your process required those who are participating in a public hearing in front of your planning board, that you set up deadlines so that if you want to have something considered by the planning board at a meeting on the following Tuesday, you have to have it to the planning department by the Thursday before so that can be put together as part of the packet that's going to go to the planning board. Because I don't know how you find it, but when I was on the planning board and occasionally would have an applicant drop a 10-page engineering report in my lap while I was sitting at the planning board meeting that night, it is impossible to address the nuances of an engineering assessment while you're sitting at a planning board meeting for the first time. So making sure these materials are submitted prior to the public hearing is essential to allowing planning board members to digest it. But all to digest it, but also avoiding having to inadvertently needing to close or reopen public hearings. Boards are not required, after you've closed the public hearing, to deliberate that night. But if you don't make a decision after you've closed the public hearing, you really have to be careful when you've scheduled the next occasion the board will meet to discuss and make a final decision, to avoid ex parte contacts, not have contacts with the applicant or butters until you've made a decision. When you're making a decision, you certainly have the right to rely upon your personal knowledge of the area. That's the reason why we have local members of the community be on planning board, because you know your community. You may even know a particular area of town. You may know a lot about the particular traffic patterns or other issues that may impinge upon the merits of a particular application. Taking that into account, you also, in using your personal knowledge, you're not necessarily required to accept the conclusions of experts. But if you're going to reject an expert opinion, you have to have some sound foundation for doing so. Now, there was an interesting case, I don't remember its name off the top of my head, but it was a circumstance where it was in the town of Milton, where there was a new, there was a proposed expansion of a recreational campground. So the recreational campground had 200 sites, and they wanted to add another 100 sites. So certainly that was going to generate an increase in the amount of traffic on the only access road to this recreational campground. And so the applicant had an engineer said, no problem, that road is perfectly fine. It's going to handle the traffic, even though we're increasing the traffic because we're adding 100 new campsites. But there was direct evidence by members of, I believe it was a planning board, it may have been a ZBA, where they were able to give personal testimony. They were on that road during the high season of vacations in July and August, and knew that there was crowding of the road for people parking on the road, and many times, the road was clogged with traffic. And so they had direct personal knowledge, which tended to undercut the expert report by the traffic engineer. So that kind of personal testimony can actually weigh in, and therefore justify the planning board in saying, well, we're not going to buy this expert's report because we have direct evidence that the road is not working now, and certainly will not work well when we add that many more campsites to that recreational campground. On the other hand, it is also true that a planning board cannot ignore uncontradicted expert testimony. And that's the condos east case. And the condos east case is famous because what happened was the Conway Planning Board was convinced that a particular project had to have a second means of egress. And I think it was about a 100-watt subdivision, a significant size. It was going to have one road in, and the planning board was convinced it needed to have another road on the back end as a second means of ingress and egress. Unfortunately, it turned out that the Conway Public Works Director didn't think they needed a second means of egress. The Conway Planning Board's own engineering consultant did not think they needed a second means of egress, and the applicant's engineer did not think they needed a second means of egress. But the Conway Planning Board said, we don't care, we want one. And the Supreme Court said, you know what, you can't do that. So if you have uncontradicted expert testimony, it's going to be tough to say, we don't care what the experts say. But you can, if you have direct personal evidence that contradicts the or undercuts the opinion of the expert, you can say, no, we have evidence of our own personal nature that allows me to conclude the expert's report is not reliable, and therefore, we're going to make a judgment inconsistent with the expert, but consistent with our own assessment of the area. And again, that's based upon the personal knowledge of the planning board member. The Dartmouth-Hanover case is important. It's one that we always have to come back to, remind ourselves that there are clearly limitations of what a planning board can and cannot do. In this case, all dealt with, you know, whether or not a very large, new athletic building that was being constructed by the city, by Dartmouth College in the town of Hanover, was going to have a uniquely, a unique impact on the adjacent property owners, mainly having to do with the argument that was one advanced by members of the planning board, that the large structure was going to cast a shadow, depriving the neighbors of the sunshine in the winter, mostly didn't get it anyway, but certainly depriving them of significant parts of the year when the shadow from this large building would cast over their homes and deprive them of sunlight, direct sunlight on their homes. Problem was that the evidence demonstrated that in every way, this proposed very large structure, admittedly, met all the requirements of Hanover's regulations, and that Dartmouth College had produced a professional light and shadow casting study, demonstrating that, nope, we're really not going to have much of any impact on the sunlight available to the adjacent homes. But the planning board members nonetheless said, you don't agree with that. We think this is a skunk and a garden party, and we're not going to approve it. And the Supreme Court concluded, I think correctly, planning boards really can't make decisions based upon their own feelings and personal judgment. It has to be based upon, squarely on some basis on the regulations the city or town has, founded on some accurate assessment of how those regulations define that the use is going to meet the requirements or is not going to meet the requirements, not necessarily based upon the personal opinions of the planning board members, that they were, that the proposed building was not conforming to their expectations, aesthetic expectations, as opposed to did it conform to the actual regulations itself. So the planning board cannot supplant the specific regulations and ordinances that control site plan review process with their personal opinions. When you're making a decision, it is important, obviously, that the decision be in writing, and you provide written reasons in the event of disapproval. So a project cannot be simply denied. You can't just say, we're going to deny approval of this 10-lot subdivision. You always have to provide reasons. And that decision has either to be approved or disapprove, or approve with conditions, or again, disapprove and explaining the reasons why. And the decision must be on file within five business days of the final action by the planning board. And a tie vote is definitely not a decision. So if you have a tie vote, hopefully you don't have that problem with even number of members in a tie vote. You have to eventually come to a decision which either approves or disapproves. A tie is not a decision. When you do make a decision, a couple of things that are important to keep in mind with regards to conditional approval. If an applicant makes a representation, which is not turned into a condition of approval, it is not binding. You can't turn to the minutes and say, well, the applicant told us in this minute on this day that he was going to install a small recreational lot for the children to play in. And if it's not on the notes on the plan or in the conditions of approval, it's really not binding. Conditions have to relate to your regulations, the reason why the approval or disapproval, in this case, I would assume approval, has been granted. Many towns have standard conditions. A number of the communities that I've represented have, would have a standard set of conditions who were applicable to all projects, and they'd be a set of conditions that would be listed prior to the more detailed, specific conditions for the particular project. There's conditions precedent, that is, a condition has to be satisfied before the board signs the plan. So a condition precedent could be, we have to get, you have to get an Army Corps of Engineer permit, or you have to get a driveway permit for the Department of Transportation, or you have to get a wetlands permit from the Wetlands Bureau of the State of New Hampshire. Those are, and we can't sign the plan until those permits are in hand. And then there's conditions subsequent, which are designed to control the use of the property. You might say, as a condition subsequent, that we're approving this McDonald's, but the McDonald's has to have its waste bins behind a screened area, and it has to turn off the outdoor microphone, or turn down the volume, or turn off the outdoor microphone at 11 o'clock at night, so the noise of people asking for how many fries you want with that is not going to disturb the neighbors. Then that would be condition a subsequent. You can also be in a circumstance where if you grant a condition of compliance, that you might have to have another public hearing. So conditions don't necessarily have to have another public hearing, but one that require you to assess information before you can make a final decision would certainly require another public hearing. So if you, and I've seen this happen many times, where, you know, the project developer says, okay, we'll agree to change the orientation of that particular curb stop or intersecting road, and we're going to change it a little bit, or improve the drainage, and it's going to require engineering input and assessment of the drainage impacts for the changes. And the planning board says, fine, we'll approve that subject to final engineering review by the city engineer. Well, you can't go ahead and allow the city engineer to say everything's okay. You have to come back to have another planning board meeting, because that's a discretionary assessment of whether or not the city engineer is satisfied. And that would require what we used to call in the old days, a SCLR hearing. So in those circumstances, there would be a need to demonstrate compliance with that particular condition through a subsequent public hearing on that condition that had been imposed as part of final approval. I'm not sure how your planning board addresses the issue of grandfathering rights, but there are two elements of a statute, RSA 67439, that's important to take into account. There is, as I'm sure staff has pointed out to you in the past, this statute which says, we will be protected from changes in your regulatory structure after final approval, as long as we commence active and substantial development, and we'll protect it from changes in zoning and subdivision regulations for five years, if we commence active and substantial development within 24 months. And then you can, once you have completed, substantial completion of improvements within five years, you're completely vested from any changes in zoning and subdivision regulations forever. You never have to comply, except actually, you would still have to address any changes in impact fees, even after you've completed the substantial completion of improvements. But it's important, when you give approval, that you define what amount of work has to be commenced within the first 24 months. And so you don't want to make it so onerous that it's not going to be possible for them to get the five-year exemption, but you do want to define a certain, a minimal amount, a significant amount, depending on your point of view, of work that has to be done within the 21st, 24 months. You also should define what's going to be considered substantial completion of improvements. How many lots have to be built on? How much of the public improvements have to be completed, rather than leaving it to a Superior Court judge to decide whether that's considered completely vested. So understanding how that statute fits into your decision is important, because there would be a need to express that in your approval. So it should say something like that, within 24 months, you shall have, you know, cut in the road, laid down some degree of drainage, something that defines what amount of work has to be considered active and substantial. And then you should, at the back end, say, and this is how much work would be needed to be completed in order to complete, considered substantial completion of improvements. And then allow you to say, the project is exempt in the future from any changes in your subdivision and site plan and zoning ordinance regulations. Housing Appeal Board is a new method by which those who are aggrieved by decisions of the planning board can appeal to an administrative body, not the Superior Court. It was, went into effect, was adopted through legislation, and it then into effect July 1, 2020, and was not repealed in 2021. So the, in 2021, three members were appointed by the Supreme Court, and the duty of the board is to address final decisions of municipal boards, in particular the planning board, on questions of housing and housing development. So it's kind of like the system we have set up currently now for those who are aggrieved by tax abatement decisions. So if you're aggrieved by a decision about the granting or denial of a tax abatement, or denial of a tax abatement, you can appeal either to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals or to Superior Court. Housing Appeals Board's kind of the same way. If you're aggrieved by a decision by the key and planning board, you, a couple of years ago, would only be able to appeal to the Superior Court. Now you can appeal to the Housing Appeals Board if it touches on questions of housing and housing development. The hearing procedure is pretty similar to the Superior Court. The decision-making process is all based upon a certified record that the staff presents and prepares and presents to the Housing Appeals Board. The decisions come out fairly quickly. In fact, the Housing Appeals Board has gotten a little bit better in posting the decisions on its website, and they're, you know, useful because they give guidance in a lot of new areas of zoning and planning law that probably hadn't been addressed up until recently, because the board is churning out these decisions rather frequently, as opposed to the Superior Court, that takes a longer period of time. Ultimate decisions by the Housing Appeals Board can also appeal to the Supreme Court. And then, of course, there's Superior Court appeal. And a Superior Court appeal is where, if you're aggrieved by a planning board decision, and you have standing, you can appeal within 30 days of the board's decision. You know, the, I think, probably the most important thing to keep in mind when the city is being held into court by someone who's aggrieved by a planning board decision, is that city has no burden of proof. The burden of proof is on the other party who is aggrieved by your decision. They have to show that your decision is illegal or unreasonable. And so I would just, my experience has been, you know, the key thing to win in these cases is to make sure every scrap of paper you can conceivably think of that might relate to this approval is put into the certified record. And the certified record is neatly organized, paginated, and set up into sections, so that the court can quickly see that there was evidence in the record that supports the planning board's decision. And as long as that's true, even though the court may not agree with your decision, if there's evidence in the record, it's going to be harder for the other side to show that the planning board's decision was illegal or unreasonable. So that concludes just that section. I have a few more things on conflict of interest, but before I go to that, I just wanted to stop and see if there's any questions related to some of these process things that I've gone over just at this point.
Does anyone, no one has any question, any questions, Steve? How many slides are left?
Four.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a few words about conflicts of interest. RSA 67314 defines what is the ways in which a land use board member, including planning board member, may have a conflict of interest. So a planning board member cannot participate or sit on a case if that member has a direct personal or pecuniary interest in the outcome. So that would mean that you have a financial interest, or you have a personal interest. A financial interest could be, you're an investor in the project, or the applicant is your employer. Personal interest could be, the applicant is a relative or a close friend. So a personal pecuniary interest would define one where you should recuse yourself. But a member of the planning board could also be required to recuse him or herself if she or he would be deemed unable to hear the same kind of case in the Superior Court. So when we are trying to assess whether a person could sit in a jury case, we try to determine, would they expect a gain or lose on the disposition of the case? Are you related to any party in the case before you? Have you advised or assisted anyone? Have you directly or indirectly given your opinion? Or have you formed an opinion? Are you employed or employ any of the people in the case, applicants before the planning board? Are you prejudiced? Do you employ counsel who are appearing on behalf of the applicant? So these are the things you would be asked to assess whether or not you should recuse yourself. I think the key thing, probably more than anything else, which is, we understand, is addressing whether a planning board member should recuse themselves, is whether they have exercised prejudgment. If you've announced in the public, or on a social media site, you're opposed to a particular project, you prejudge the case, and you probably can't hear it, and be fair, and sit on that particular case, but you probably have to recuse yourself. And just a few... case, but you probably have to recuse yourself. And just a few Superior Court decisions. One of these, and this, both of these have to do with social media. In this case, it's the Robert Foley versus, trustee of, Robert Foley trustee versus a town in Enfield. In this case, what the ZBA chair had done while the case was pending, before they had made a decision on a motion for rehearing, is to submit an inquiry to what's known as the PlanLink, which is a listserv managed by the Office of Planning and Development. And so PlanLink has been there for many years where land use board members can share and trade ideas. In this case, the ZBA chair did that. And the day after he did that, the ZBA, and he received some feedback on whether or not something would be considered, you know, I guess, he was trying to decide whether or not, you know, there would be a precedent addressed, assigned to making a certain decision in a certain way. And so the ZBA chair received this information. The day later, they made a decision to deny the motion for rehearing. The applicant later on learned that there was this dialogue the chair had on this social media site, and he argued that this impaired his ability to have a fair decision-making process because of that sharing of information on the website, which was arguably material to his case. And the Supreme Court said, "No, not enough information to say that that would impair the fairness of the process, and there wasn't really a prejudgment." However, a related case really does give us some guidance about the danger of social media. And this is the Z1 Express versus City of Manchester case. So here, there was a conditional use permit process going on for the planning board for the construction of a new gas station in a controversial area of the city of Manchester. And after the public hearing process was completed, two members of the planning board, one of whom was a member of the Board of Alderman, voiced opposition to the project on a social media site that had been established by the opponents. And one of the members who would voice opposition, when he came to the public hearing, was prepared to then vote on the application. He was asked to recuse himself, and he refused. He later voted to deny the application, consistent with what he had said on the social media site. Superior Court eventually got the case and said, "The members' failure to enter, participate, and participate in deliberation with an open mind undermined the integrity of the deliberative process." So I think this speaks to the need to avoid social media, especially those that are put up by the people who are supporting or opposing applications, because that could jeopardize your ability to be a fair member of the planning board to make a final decision on any applications for subdivision or site plan. So finally, when we're talking about conflicts of interest, just remind you that you have this ability to ask for an advisory vote. If there's a concern you have about whether you have a particular conflict of interest, you can ask your fellow board members, "Do I have one?" and let them give you guidance. You might want to have social media rules of procedure, you know, to discourage members of the planning board from posting things on social media. But certainly, when you're dealing with issues of this type, whether or not you might have a conflict of interest, personal or pecuniary interest or a prejudgment, it's always better to err on the side of caution and to recuse yourself. And hopefully, there'll be sufficient other members of the planning board or alternates who can handle the case in your absence. So with that, I would say I have completed my presentation and happy to take any further questions that members of the planning board might have.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any further questions from the board for Steve? I think that's it. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.